Good evening, this is Tuesday, September 8th, 2015. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 18th, 2015 regular meetings.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion or corrections? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.
No.
I'm sorry. Abstentions? Diane? Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2015 special meeting, Board of Education Goals Workshop.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 1st, 2015 Emergency Special Meeting.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment, if there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment at this time. All right, seeing none, we move on to 2015-16 Board Goal Development Update.
Well, in your packets are the most recent version of the board goals that started under development at our Goals Workshop on August 24th and that are the result of several of you providing feedback via email after that meeting. So this is where we're at right now, I haven't gotten any kind of feedback or reaction for better than a week or so, but before we actually act on these, I thought we should at least have one, at least one more opportunity for discussion before acting on them later in this agenda or holding them off and acting on them at a subsequent board meeting, so...
Deirdre?
I just want to say I'm particularly appreciative of the reworking of language for Goal 3 in terms of advocacy, because I think we were all sort of mulling over how best to represent the diversity of possible viewpoints within our group while also sort of signaling to our community and creating for ourselves a kind of an expectation that we're going to redouble our efforts to be advocates for our students. And I think you really capture that in the language here very effectively, Joe. I particularly like the reminder that public education and advocacy on behalf of our students is essential, an essential element of a democratic society. It was very, I think, well put. So, thank you.
Lisa?
I concur with what Deirdre just said. I think that these are very nicely stated now and I'm happy to stand behind them. I just did want to say one additional thing, though, and that is that I want to, not that any of us are in bad about this, but just for, you know, those who may be watching from the audience or come, that the process this board goes through every year is to adopt goals. And those goals are used by the district for various purposes. But that doesn't mean that last year's goals or two years ago's goals disappear and we're not interested in those things anymore. So we remain committed to the goals that this board has adopted in years past and we will be discussing issues that arise from those goals from time to time over the course of the year and invite people to revisit those with us.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so I guess we're ready to finalize these for as we look to next time.
Yeah, there's an action item a little later on our agenda, so...
Great. Okay. Move on to Board Committee Reports. We have Communications and Curriculum.
Communications is me. So exciting news about the website relaunch. New format is up and running and it's got additional functionality that the old site didn't have, including Google Calendar. On the homepage, there's something called Ask the District and we're hopeful that community members will use that as a way of asking questions, you know, anything as simple as what's for lunch today to, what is the board policy on X, Y, and Z. And it did an effort to try to get people to talk to us rather than talk to the ether and social media and trying to get an answer that they have and not be accurate. We have also, there have also been included a few how-to videos for teachers so that they can create dynamic webpages, keep those updated through the year. And of course, we have the opportunity to follow us on Twitter, @jo and Athletics on Twitter. There's also in, on the back end for teachers, a new teacher mentor page which archives all of the electronic resources available to faculty and staff, which is a really nice feature for them, it's a repository of information for them to address whatever they need. The images on the homepage, we're hoping to keep fresh and not stagnant, so there are three at the moment, there will continue to be three. We're trying to keep them thematic in some way. One of the theme, one of the images will reflect what public education looks like in this district, a lot of classroom happenings, community opportunities, PTSO picnic is one coming up, and extracurricular information and stuff like this, school assignments of that nature. We are hopefully sending email blasts to parents to let them know that this new rollout has happened and invite parents to take a look at the website and provide feedback. We also would like for you all to take a look and provide feedback to Webmaster@Rhinebeck, so that's the back there. Those emails go to Steve Jensen and Ed Schindler, who's been our webmaster, and they will address concerns or questions that may come up. We're also going to pilot the use of targeted information blasts, so there are people who like to have information pushed to them, so if they're particularly interested in knowing what's happening in the budget process or curriculum development or any of those kinds of things, people can opt in to getting updates as new information is pushed into the site per minutes, things of that nature. So we'll see if Deirdre will respond to that and hopefully we'll get good feedback. We'll continue to talk about the website and we'll, we'll start Monday. I'm just collaborating on how to get the message out, parent forums and things like that. And, you know, our goals now are kind of being introduced.
Diane, you have a question?
This is very exciting, the website. I've been looking at options on here. I have a question, the Google Calendar, does it say how to do that to add to them? You have to have a certain calendar or like, is there directions? Because that, I would think, people might very easily just get all that information.
I'm trying, there aren't directions that I'm aware of, but I'm a Google Calendar user, so I was able to click into the Google Calendar format and it would populate my calendar because I wanted it to. We can certainly ask Steve if we have the Google Calendar, just in some how-to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
People have Apple Calendar.
Deirdre?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, while we're on the topic, Joe, just, I know we talked about trying to get the photos on the website to be specific to Rhinebeck, and they're still not local, so...
That's right.
It'd be good if that could happen as soon as possible, starting now. People are going to be really using the website more now that it's starting, so I think having it look localized would be important.
Yep, I agree. I just have a question about the Ask the District, so I'm just curious what the process is once a question comes in.
When questions come in, Joe and Steve, I think, receive them directly, they're not public yet, and Joe and Steve will direct them to the appropriate department administrator or teacher, that kind of thing. And then, once those questions have been vetted and answered, they'll be posted publicly on the website.
Diane?
No, I just wanted to add how enormously helpful I think this is going to be. We've talked a lot about it within our committee, but, I mean, there are people now using formal channels, Facebook and group, you know, groups that parents in Rhinebeck are part of, because they want this kind of sharing of information and kind of getting the town crier sort of function up and running, so it's great that our website will be providing that information to people.
Diane?
Another good point is, with the Twitter feed being on there, I'm just wondering, Joe, is there any plans for our administrators to start making their own Twitter? Possibly, like, they can reach their own students.
I'd be glad to suggest that. I think it'd be a great idea, actually, or I could force them to make that one of their goals, but I think it's a great idea. Steve is using the athletic department Twitter feed, I think, very effectively and, you know, I've tried to kind of cover the waterfront. It would be nice to increase that. Oh, yeah, I think it's a great idea. Thanks for the suggestion. I'm sure they'll thank you as well. Yes, yes.
All right, other questions or comments for Communications Committee? All right, move on to Curriculum.
So, members of the Curriculum Committee met with Marvin, perhaps, to get an update on all of the tremendous work that has been underway with faculty K through 12, and we've been focusing, as you all remember, on the development of the ELA curriculum. We received very detailed information about the state of the elementary school ELA curriculum, which should be ready for board approval in September, where that is the goal we are working towards. There's a lot of information in the minutes, I'm not going to summarize for you, but please read the notes carefully because I think it gives you a good idea of how in-depth we're going to be going in terms of what we're approving and what we will not be looking at in terms of the approval process. Believe me, we'll have a lot to look at, given the parameters we've set out. The middle school ELA curriculum is also in hand and Marvin is working towards giving us a revised draft document of that material prior to the September, not 15th, but 18th Curriculum Committee meeting. One rather important point that came out of our ongoing conversations about this development process is the challenge of thinking about vertical conversations, say, across all teachers of Social Studies and History or all teachers of English from across buildings and, we have team approach it in the middle school, so there's a lot of conversation horizontally, but he did sort of point out that this is an opportunity with all this curriculum development to really try to make a more robust process of what he called teacher-informed review of the curriculum in a vertical sense. Hopefully, perhaps with CDEP taking on new life, this could be something that could be discussed within that group. He shared with us that there's an appendix that's being developed to support balanced literacy instruction in particularly elementary school, sort of an operational manual with lots of helpful information for teachers. The high school ELA unit planners are now in draft form and they're being, they're going to be being taught essentially this year as a kind of a pilot year before the kind of like final copy of that curriculum will be in place. Then he gave us a very long list of many wonderful projects, which I'm not going to read out to you because in fact, I think there are like 10 or 12 or something of them, but we looked at a five-page spreadsheet of many, many things that are going on in math and technology and with the special instructors in the elementary school, alignment projects, looking at library instruction, AP revisions, the giant computer lab project, which happily is further along than we perhaps had hoped would be the case at the end of the summer. There's lots of detail in the minutes about the kinds of tech learning tools that are going to be in place for our students. So it was incredibly productive summer. The committee will be meeting again on September 18th and we are hoping therefore to come back to you with those ELA documents.
Questions? Diane?
Just about literacy and manual, who's work is that paperwork on my staff, by Marvin?
It seems like Marvin is pulling it together in consultation with the faculties are developing the curriculum, kind of response, right?
And we have, I'm not sure off the top of my head exactly how many days a year we have them, but the people that used to be called Aussies, they use a different name now for their consulting firm, but we have ramped that back significantly over the last few years as our teachers have taken on more responsibility for doing that work. But she is still working with teams of teachers and with Marvin to review and make sure that there's, that those curricula that they're writing and the ELA curricula that they're writing are faithful to the balanced literacy concept. So we have outside eyes laid on those documents as well, which I think is helpful.
More?
It's also a great training tool, new teachers to come in, so that...
And a sort of archive, right, of practices, terminology, definitions and so forth, just so people can go back and refresh their memory and awareness of all of these practices.
Peter?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's great that you note in the minutes how important it is that our teachers have made, created their own curriculum. And that's an enormous amount of work. We're fortunate that we're able to support that work financially and that we have teachers who are willing to put in the time to do that. And I know Marvin has used that term before that you note in the minutes, that that work is the engine of innovation, that the process of developing the curriculum is part of what, you know, enriches that curriculum and that collaborative effort on behalf of the teachers. So I think, you know, one of the things that we still have brewing out there in Communications is how to acknowledge some of the great things about our school district and I certainly, you know, maybe there's some way we could recognize our teachers for all that work at a time when there's so much pressure and as is noted in the minutes, many districts are sort of bi-curricula because, you know, in many ways, that's the easier thing to do. So, you know, I'm just proud of the work that our teachers do and want to recognize that.
Perhaps a good time to do that would be when the board finally adopts those curricula. We know then they're, they're good to go and that would be, I think, a good jumping off place to say, yeah, this is something to celebrate because it has been several years in the making and it is a significant task that they have been agreeable and eager to write their own curriculum documents as opposed to grab some canned product off the shelf. And that, that might be a good memory jogger for, hey, it's finally done, it's official once you give it your seal of approval and then we can crow about that a little bit. Good idea.
Deirdre?
I also want to say that it strikes me that the process, as labor-intensive and, you know, time-consuming as it is, there's such authenticity to the work that's done so that even, you know, with the changes blowing this way and that through Albany, you know, one year we have this to say about the curriculum, the next year we have something else to say. The fact that the curriculum is developed organically and authentically from within this community means that it will withstand the sort of blowing of change of the winds of fortune when it comes to, you know, what we're being told from on eye. So it really is tremendously impressive work.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'd just like to second that because I'm sure you all saw this, but our governor has been making statements in the past couple of weeks about how the Common Core needs to be revamped, that it's flawed, something he apparently just discovered.
He's been pretty busy.
Yeah. He would say so. And that, you know, that may, in fact, is probably likely to result in another round of directives to school districts to change what they do and how they do it. So the fact that we have a committed group of educators in this district who want to take it upon themselves to put together a curriculum that is delivering education to the students in the best way that they know how to do it and that we can help them do it is very meaningful and I do think that whatever happens with this, we are likely to come, we're likely to have product that we can use, our students can use going forward. It's gratifying.
All right, anyone else with curriculum? All right, we move on to the designation of delegate and alternate to the 2015-16 New York State School Board Association Conference slash Convention. So in your packets, there is a document stating that we have to declare the names of voting delegates and alternate by September 10th, which is two days from today. I'll just mention that in my experience on the Board of Education, we have not sent a delegate in my nine years to the convention floor to vote, but prior to that, we did. I did send you the link to the voting agenda, I guess it is, yesterday, so I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it. It's quite lengthy, so a detailed read probably was not in the cards from between yesterday and today, but I don't know how anybody feels about that. So would anyone like to comment? I mean, I'm willing to be the voting delegate if we feel strongly that we want to...
Who's staying till Tuesday, more?
And you need an alternate as well.
Yes. Lisa?
Thank you for... Yes, I did read through the materials at the link, thank you for forwarding that.
You're welcome.
And, I mean, I think most of them are resolutions that we'd be in general agreement with. I didn't see anything that I thought we should be opposed to. I mean, wording is, doesn't really, isn't really that meaningful, I think, under these circumstances. So I'd be happy to, you know, give you and or the alternate, the freedom to make decisions that you think are best on the floor.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Laura?
I also didn't see anything that I thought we, as a body, would object to. Mark and I were having a little bit of a conversation with Mark this morning and not really knowing how this works on the floor for delegates and all, I don't, I appreciate your time, but I'm wondering if it's a good use of your time if we're just going to sort of stamp, or do we all agree it's our good resolutions? I thought of your discussion.
Deirdre?
Well, it does strike me that there's also the potential, if not immediately, since this will be happening fairly soon, but down the road, if we do become active participants in bringing resolutions ourselves, as other school districts have done, and I see no reason we couldn't sort of do that. So getting kind of back into the conversation, if we've been out of it for a while, seems like the first step. It seems to me NISBA should truly represent the will of its constituencies and we're part of that, so...
I don't know why they're in it first.
Just quickly, I would say that since one of our goals that we're going to be voting on this evening is geared towards advocacy, now NISBA is an advocacy arm that we can and probably should make greater use of and, you know, to the extent that we can add our voice. And I do think that there are times when there are discussions on the floor during the business meeting that you could conceivably participate in, that it is worthwhile as long as you have the time and the inclination to do it.
Okay. Deirdre?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at the resolutions carefully, but, you know, maybe also, I see the point you're making. I was going to say like, we could not, you know, have a delegate and alternate named by this date and then probably withdraw, right? If you, if we decide that timing isn't good or...
Well, all you have to do is don't show up on the floor, that's all.
So one year, many, many years ago, I think Paul and I went into the business meeting, it was in Syracuse or Rochester, and, you know, it's interesting, I think also people do bring motions at that time.
From the floor.
From the floor. So, you know, I think Lisa's point is good, it's like an entry point maybe into it. I could, I've had trouble figuring out my schedule in October, trying to figure out whether I can make the convention or when I would be there, but I could probably let you know by, what is it, in two days or something, whether, I mean, I could maybe an alternate. But then I have to like register for the convention.
Well, very end. We take care of that.
But, but maybe if it got closer and looking, I can't make an assessment, maybe if they really are all like, yeah, we just report that, or you could go and then leave if it seemed like it wasn't sort of worth your time.
I guess we should go about appointing a delegate and then, you know, we can decide later if we really want to send somebody to the floor.
Well, my guess is if the names we turn in by the 10th of September are the only people they will issue credentials to, I mean, they take this pretty seriously, so we, you know, I think their deadline of September 10th is meaningful only in that that person or persons who we submit, whose names we submit will be the only ones. We can't decide at the last minute, oh, somebody will jump in there for this person. They won't allow that to happen. So I would suggest making a decision this evening about a delegate and an alternate, whoever his name that happens to be, and if somebody whose name can't go to the convention, then so be it, we're down to one individual. And if Mark decides that morning, he really, really, really wants to attend a training session on this and decides not to go, then so be it. I mean, we have total flexibility as to whether our delegate and or alternate actually show up, but if we don't submit those names, we won't have anybody on the floor.
Lisa?
So then, I mean, I appreciate your offering, your candor about your scheduling issues, but maybe we should pick somebody who's definitely committed to be going, just so that we have a name in there so we don't lose the opportunity.
Deirdre?
Can I propose a sort of compromise possibility, which would be if Deirdre's willing to be the alternate and we need to send that name by September 10th, if you can figure that out by September 10th, then it would be you and Mark, I'd be happy to be an alternate to the alternate. So if you find you can't go, then I'm happy to step in. So we know there's someone sitting there ready to go.
We just spelled the last name.
Is that okay? So just Deirdre the second, Deirdre the second.
They're probably not going to ask you for ID at the door in.
Yeah, I'd be like, eh, Deirdre, let me in.
I got married in the past, often changed my name.
Does that, does that make sense to you? Okay. I was actually looking at like my schedule today. Okay, cool. Well, I think it'd be great to know.
Rick?
I'm going to get back into the discussion and value of this. I think if we name a delegate and an alternate, alternate, all of a sudden they become part of another level of network and they'll actually get lobbied, they'll actually get information that we can find very valuable. We talked about, actually Tom told us one night about how the middle-level school districts have banded together and then someone suggested all about in terms of getting some additional aid. We may find some colleagues or some cohorts out there through this process as well, so let's do this.
So maybe under action items, then I'll make a motion to appoint Mark a delegate and me an alternate and Deirdre our second alternate. How's that?
Sounds like a plan. Good. All right, moving on to good news. Lisa, go ahead.
School starts tomorrow. I think that's good for all the parents and all the kids and the teachers as well, so win-win, as they said.
All right, so I'll just mention that, you know, the athletic season's already started a couple of weeks already and I saw that the combination of Pine Plains and Rhinebeck won their first game 46 to nothing, football. So that's really impressive and hopefully Amin's people will have a good season. Deirdre?
Yeah, so today was the opening of school for the teachers officially and I want to thank Mark for speaking on our behalf this morning. I appreciate that and I also want to thank Joe for his remarks and I just want to share because this relates to the Curriculum Committee minutes, I was particularly interested, Joe, that you mentioned, you know, the CDEP process to the staff this morning and it sounds like you some of this morning to share that in smaller groups and ask for feedback, so I was glad to see that. I was glad to see that process. You know, one of the things in our goals is to affirm the shared decision-making process, so to start out this morning doing that is a good, a good step. Thank you.
It was a good opportunity. Captive audience is always something to take advantage of.
All right, other good news? All right, moving on to old business. Yes.
I think it's, might be old business, maybe it's other, that Lori Rich has sent out emails about the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting this Thursday. I think she wants an RSVP, did she?
Yeah, I think that's true.
So she could know how many people...
Many cookies to buy.
I'm pretty sure I can be there.
Okay. I was planning on going myself.
Excellent. Oh, good.
What's the topic?
It's APPR, actually.
Julie Shaw's coming.
Yes, yes.
All right, so, can I just, yes, can I have a show of hands who's planning on going? So, okay, so there's four of us going, and I'll take care of responding.
Thank you.
Other old business?
They won't know what to do with four of us there.
They'll be like, "Reinbeck in the house."
Yeah, like, we'll need a bigger, we'll need a bigger room, because they meet in that small, well, that's great, but that's great.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
We punch it all away.
All right, other old business? All right, we have another opportunity for public comment. Seeing none. Other.
There's a lot of others.
Lisa.
I have two items of other. The first is, I would like to request sometime within the next two meetings, if the administration is able to put the information together, to have a discussion item on the agenda about the budget, and although it's very early, the topic that I'd like to discuss, which informed our goals discussion, is what the, what the picture is likely to look like, assuming that the tax levy cap percentage is at or below 1%. I know that there were a number of predictions during the summer on that subject, and I think that it's important for us to start getting our arms around what that's going to look like. I would suggest, again, if this is something that is not overly burdensome for the administration and the business office in particular, that we have, you know, sort of a forecast of that, and maybe also a, just sort of a rollover budget forecast, so that we can compare what those two pictures look like.
I can put a simple one together.
Okay, I mean, it doesn't have to be as detailed as we'd be doing for the regular budget discussion, but just so we can start thinking about what's...
As long as the understanding is that we're spitballing it at this point, then we could probably...
Of course, but I don't think it's too soon to start with that.
My idea, if you, would be, is on the revenue side, about how many additional tax dollars we're able to accumulate, being it's less than 1%, then it depends upon our growth, too.
Of course.
That even if it's at 1%, we're talking about $260,000.
Well...
What do I know that the raises are already, as far as those things that I do know?
Exactly, and, I mean, obviously, you can't predict the future, but if you have some assumptions that you're going to be operating under, just so you lay out what those assumptions are for us, so that when we discuss it, we'll all discuss it in the same thing.
Yeah, well, we had one bit of good news came out over the weekend, is the employer retirement system contribution rate is going down by, I think I figured, somewhere between 15 and 20%.
Wow.
It's going from 18 to 15, you know? It's only a 3% drop.
Oh, okay.
But overall, that number's going to drop about, anywhere about 15 to 20%.
That's good.
Which, that's one good thing, and I'm hoping that the same thing happens on the teacher's side, but those are only the big, those are the only ones that I can look at and say, those are going down.
Of course.
I can only see only other ones going up, but we'll, we'll, we'll ballpark some together.
I appreciate that, thank you. And then the other, the other other that I just wanted to say, I think that I've told some of you individually this, I was, again, very early, but I, my term as a trustee on the Board of Education expires at the end of this school year, so the end of June 2016. I'm not going to run for my seat again, so that seat will be open. I'm announcing this now, because I want to give everybody who might be interested in serving on the Board of Education as much notice as they could possibly get, that there is going to be an open seat available, and I can't encourage anybody who's watching this enough to consider this, and to, if you feel able and willing to make the commitment to do it. Not only is it personally enriching and rewarding, but it is probably the most important thing that you can do as a member of this community, because there's nothing that we do as a community that's more important than educating our children. So, you know, that's my plug for thinking about running for the Board of Education. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Anyone else with other? Laura?
I don't know if you guys saw Dorothy Slattery's email blast recently. I was reading through it and was struck by the number of meetings that these representatives have had with Congressmen and school districts, and I noticed that Mary Ann Nine has not been represented at all. So in terms of our advocacy efforts, I don't know if anybody's ever met Dorothy Slattery, but it seems to me like Long Island was getting an awful lot of face time with Congress, you know, the big five, obviously, but we certainly are not in this list. Our whole area is not represented, so I don't know how we make it work, but we have.
All right, I have a couple of items of other. One is, we received a card from Senator Serino congratulating us for being one of America's top schools, so I'll just pass it this way, and then we can pass it back, so you guys can have a chance to see it. Also, in your packets, there is an invitation to Mid-Hudson School, actually, to Mid-Hudson School Study Council events. One is a breakfast that is going to be held during the NISBA convention, and the other is an invitation to the dinner this fall that, which, Mary Cunningham will be honored for her award for excellence in teaching. So I'd like to know if we're interested in attending the breakfast at the convention, and also encourage you to, you know, if you're available, to sign up to go to the dinner, as Joe mentioned this morning, he's going to pass that information to the principals so that they can take names of people that are interested in going from the faculty as well.
Well, if his board members are interested in going, either let me know or let Mary Ann know, and when we get closer to October 7th, we'll, we'll make the reservations. I'm hoping to get a large contingent of our administrative and teaching staff, especially from the high school, but if any of you want to go, just let Mary Ann know, and take names.
And I'll also mention that I remember last year, the Dutchess County School Board Association invited member districts to participate in a dinner at the convent, you know, during the convention, so I encourage you to give thought as to whether we should do that if it's offered again this year. We'll have a meeting on Thursday, so perhaps that subject will come up, so, all right. Deirdre.
Joe, you're going to bring up the breakfast.
Yes, but you may if you wish. You already brought it up, so...
I just want to make sure that we get to it, because I, so I had this thought, we come to the date, just related to some of the earlier conversation about the work our teachers doing and communicating that, there, I'm just reminding, just indulge me for a second, because this is just occurring to me, last year, we thought about, at the Communications Committee, to sort of do a letter from the board, from the board president to the staff, kind of a, you know, thanks for all you do as this school year begins, and how much we value the work you do, to sort of set the stage for, you know, what it is that we appreciate about and to hear from us right away in the beginning of the school year. So one thought would be to pair such a letter, if, you know, we were so inclined to do it, with the invitation to the breakfast with the board, which is coming up, if we decide after a second, then the timing really works, so. I don't, I don't know, Mark is our representative, and other people want to kind of try and do something like that.
So Rick's hand first.
I think that's a great idea. I would suggest that the letter from the board be signed by all the members of the board, come from the president, have us all sign on here.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, Deirdre, did you...
I just, he said it so beautifully.
I'm just writing this down, so, yeah. All right, any other items of other?
Well, before we move away from that, that having been decided, is October 2nd a good day for most, if not all, of you to attend one, if not both, sessions? I just want to make sure we have a good representation from the board. Excuse me?
Yeah, yeah.
This is just the teachers?
Probably any chancellor.
Yeah, we start here with BMS and Reinbeck High School about 7:00, then we schlep over to Chancellor around...
That's fine.
7:30, quarter of 8:00, when we finish here, those teachers come in, and then by 9:00 they, or earlier, they have to be with their, with their children, so it's over by 9:00, and I think we have a committee meeting at 9:30.
This is Friday, the 2nd of October.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And I threw it out to the high, to the building principals, it said, they said it didn't conflict with anything that they could think of that might be happening before school, so if it works for your calendars, then what I'll probably do is I will, within, by the end of the week, I'll, I'll send out a saved date, which will not preempt what, which I would want to follow that up with the board's letter, saying, you know, this is a formal invitation to join us, and to mention the things that had been mentioned earlier, and that's like the final, yeah, it's happening.
Great.
Sounds great.
Great.
Okay.
I have one more other, actually. Now, I just want to, if you haven't had a chance to look, the most recent copy of Onboard NISBA's newsletter, I just think there's an interesting article about a lawsuit a teacher on Long Island is bringing against the state education department regarding the APPR and the calculus used to determine her number and the validity or not validity of that. I just think it's, I didn't know about it, and I didn't know that it sort of directly addresses some of the kinds of things we've talked about around the table, and I tried to, I guess, I couldn't access it online, you need like a login number to get the whole thing, and I don't know how that happens, but just look at your newsletter if it's around on your kitchen table, and it's an interesting article.
There was also an interesting article in today's eclipse about, I think it might have been in terms of a letter to the editor, or an editorial from the papers, I believe it was somewhere up in the Albany area, talking about teachers who got pretty good, you know, scores in the effective and highly effective range last year, and this year, did you see that one, this year, in maybe the developing range, and wondering how there could be such swings in those scores from year to year, when they basically taught the same curriculum, and they quoted a psychometrician as saying, well, the reason is because it's not a valid way to, it's, it's a way to assess students, it's not a valid way to assess teachers, and statistically, you're going to have that, so, and just another log to throw on the fire, so, anyway.
All right, is there any other other? Move on to the action items. There's only one item on the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2015 program work.
So moved.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional coaching staff for the 2015-16 school year. Soccer, girls modified, Daniel Lovazo, $2,285.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? Diane.
Thanks for stepping forward. Yeah, definitely.
All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to approve the Board of Education's goals for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional mentors for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept library gift book donations to benefit the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School Library, from CLS parents through the Reinbeck PTSO, in the total amount of $1,090.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. And we'd like to thank the PTSO very much for their donation, and the parents. Any other discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve 2014-15 budget transfers in accordance with Board of Education Policy Number 6150 for the school year ending June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the reappointment of part-time cafeteria personnel for the 2015-16 school year, effective September 1st, 2015.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. And I'll just point out that on the memo that we were given, there has been one name removed, which is the last name on the list. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional advisors for Reinbeck High School for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor. That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the discussion of employment history of particular persons.
I wanted to move to make your delegate to the...
Oh, yeah, thank you.
All right, so, go ahead, make a motion.
I want to move that we designate Mark Flyshower, delegate to the 2015 New York State School Board Association Convention in October, with Deirdre Burns as an alternate, and Deirdre Del Bear as a second alternate.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. Now, we have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the discussion of employment history of particular persons.
So moved.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session.